Do you have the proclamation? For Arbor Day?
I, no, I do not. Print it. So, do you have this logged in or no? Do you log in?
You're not.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't about to start.
This happened as quick. Yes. At least I think so.
Really gotta watch yourself.
Oh, yeah.
I hate to, I'm gonna, can, like, wait till I find him at home.
Anything else you need?
I've, no, that's all, that's all I'm thinking.
Something like the ordinances and any of that?
Yeah, everything else I think is fine.
I'm starting, I'm s- still trying to catch up to.
Yeah, where?
Right now it's seven o'clock. How do you know it's one?
It was right time, uh.
It's great.
When you get back? Well, I thought I was saying I got my check.
Bonnats. Bonnats Saturday.
But after number across from. Oh, okay. And the other one was, uh, actually, yeah. Two goes down. Look. No, those are closed. I don't have to do a lot of travel. So, I'm, I think that.
That's great. I mean, you're making, you're making a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
Hi. How you doing?
Let's do it too.
That from Japan?
Huh?
That from Japan?
Yeah. Nope.
Did you bring a dish home?
No.
When you get back?
I brought my wife.
They wouldn't keep her?
Yeah.
When you get back?
Saturday. Saturday night. Still feeling. Getting better though, you know, I mean, Sunday night, yeah. I was tossing and turning from one o'clock in the morning until five.
Timetables, yeah?
How many hours did it take?
Fourteen.
Fourteen hours?
I was gonna say fifteen.
Fourteen is the date, like, we came home Saturday night. We left.
Yeah, you, you can, yeah, go ahead.
Saturday night?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, that, that's fine. It's o'clock. Well, let me get started.
So, you came back here on Saturday night?
Yeah, basically, we went to Seattle, well, we stopped in Seattle. Stopped in Seattle, it was eleven o'clock in the morning. All right, and it's a thirteen hour flight.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it is seven thirty.
Okay.
Back at night, come, right, to the state city.
All righty. Okay, if we're ready, I'd like to start. If you'd help me with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have roll call, please, my friend. All right, Alderman, Alderman Keeler.
Here.
Alderman McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Wolf.
Here.
Alderman Coontz.
Here.
Alderman Emmett.
Here.
Alderman Stewie.
Here.
Alderman Danahill. Absent. Mayor Hortsman.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Okay, we'll go into announcements. Uh, join us for a community tree planting event near the South Suburban Colleges Oak Forest Campus on Saturday, September twenty seventh. To register, go to our website, www dot oak dash forest dot org. Bremen High School District will host a community wellness clinic on October tenth from ten AM to two PM at the Oak Forest High School. Again, to register, visit the high school's website. City Hall is a drop off site for New Life Community Church's Little Lamb's Closet Diaper Drive. Residents can drop diapers or wipes off until October thirteenth. The Oak Forest Crestwood Area Chamber of Commerce's Community Expo is on Saturday, October eighteenth from nine AM to noon at Arbor Park Middle School. The free expo includes exhibitions, iPass on demand, raffles and giveaways and kids costumes parade at ten AM. For details, again, visit the Oak Forest Crestwood Chamber of Commerce website, oc dash chamber dot org. State Representative Bob Rita is holding a household hazardous waste recycling event for all Illinois residents on Saturday, October twenty fifth from eight AM to three PM at the Ozinga Field at four oh one one South Kenton Avenue in Crestwood. Uh, registration is required. For details, call Representative Rita's office at seven oh eight, three nine six, two eight two two. Bremen Township is a drop off center for the annual Bremen High School National Honor Society and Student Council Stuff the Bus Food Drive. Canned goods and other non-perishable items can be dropped off at one fifty three fifty Oak Park Avenue until November twenty first. Uh, there's an announcement from the Oak Forest Broadcast Network. Remembering September eleventh, can be seen streaming on the city website by clicking on C I C TV programming or can be viewed on cable TV Comcast Channel Four, Astone Channels one 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 zero or one 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 two and AT and T Channel ninety nine. Also, we are, uh, still getting ready for Halloween and our times go to eight o'clock. Uh, and I did get a few calls from people. If people do not wanna open their doors at eight o'clock in the evening, they're more than happy to get a, get a sign from, uh, from City Hall to tell people that they're only going till seven o'clock. So, I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that, so. And we have a proclamation for the city for the Arbor Day proclamation. It says, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agricultural, Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and whereas trees can be solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas and beautify our, beautify our community and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I, Jim Hortsman, Mayor of Oak Forest, Cook County, Illinois, do hereby claim April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-five as Arbor Day in the city of Oak Forest and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generation dated the twenty-third day of September twenty twenty-five. Hey, Paul, you wanna add to that, please?
Yes, um, can you hear me? All right. Is, is this working? Can you guys?
See a red light.
I don't feel like I hear any of that.
It sounds like it's going.
No change to red.
Um, but can you hear me through that? Or should I go to a different mic?
Maybe try that one, just.
Testing, testing.
Here.
Okay. Um, so, yes, before you guys, today is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Uh, as we know, that typically occurs in April. Um, in doing so, the city is looking to re- uh, solidify their recognition of a Tree City USA designation. Uh, with that, there is some, uh, additional requirements that go through that. Uh, one being committing, uh, dollars to trees as well as having a board set up, having a, um, tree, uh, management plan or, or a ordinance that requires management and maintenance of trees. Uh, and then the final two would be a, an event uh, that would be an annual event of, uh, tree planting. And then lastly, a proclamation, uh, designating Arbor Day. So, that is why this is before you. Um, this is something the city is, is hopefully looking to take advantage of in the future. Uh, not only, you know, with the deforestation on, uh, the ash burrow trees that had to be removed based, you know, upon their infestations there. Uh, the city, it now has, you know, the abilities and the wherewithal to be able to take on adding more trees and making sure we're, we're keeping the forest and oak forests. So, uh, with that, I will entertain any questions or if not, uh, thank you.
Any questions? Join.
The, at the bottom of our, um, proclamation, it does mention that on September twenty-seventh, we're having a plant, a tree planting event. And I would imagine that that's somewhere on the city website or, you know, and I thought we should mention it as part of the minutes and stuff for tonight, too.
Absolutely, and that was, uh, one of the agenda or announcement items that the mayor brought up, but I appreciate you for bringing that back on and to plug it in. Uh, it's not just any Saturday, it's this Saturday. Uh, and so it, registration is available on, on our website. Uh, if you have any difficulty with that, you could, I'm sure there's no issue with, you know, walking in, all hands on deck, you know, whoever's available. Be happy to, to have you guys out there to help out. Thank you.
And, and it says forty-four trees are being planted that day?
Correct. Forty-four trees on Kilborn and a hundred and sixty-sixth Street. The targeted area was based upon a opportunity zone. Uh, the opportunity zone just so happened to be on the far southeast corner of town. Uh, and with that, there was opportunities for the city to get tree trees, uh, funded by a grant through Open Lands. And with that, you know, we are looking to, uh, you know, do a lot of stuff with those trees and, uh, a lot of those businesses and kind of fill up the streets that give you all the way back.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. We can move on. Okay. All right, we'll move now into citizens' participation. Anyone that would like to come and address the city council can come to the podium. Just ask you that you give us your name and your address.
Sola, one five nine four two Cicero. Or as we lovingly refer to it, the I fifty Speedway. Senator.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Um, the reason I'm here this evening is, is I just wanna try to show a little bit of, uh, what's happened in my area as far as the impact of new construction in the community. Uh, you know, there's things that, that probably, you know, they aren't aware of. It do happen and, and hopefully, my being here will help prevent that when you do construction in other areas. And maybe even be more selective as far as what business you put in, in those areas. Uh, things affect the residential a lot. And you don't really realize it because it's, that's something that you would consider and it would probably cause a problem. So, I think a lot of these things could be easily rectified and, uh, and I'll bring that up to date, of course, as to what's happening now as opposed to what happened in the beginning. So, this is the Arbor Park area and I'm talking about the new Dunkin' Donuts. It's on the corner of our fifty ninth Cicero. And I'll roll back the clock a little bit. There was a, as I understand it, an eighteen month project in plan plus the time that the, uh, the project was actually built and up and running. About that time, prior to, I had come to a meeting here and I had asked the question of the council, I said, well, what's the intent of the city of Oak Forest as far as the construction or whatever you intend on doing to a hundred fifty-ninth and Cicero on the corner? Because at that time, there was nothing planned as far as I knew. So, the question was, was, well, why would you, why are you so concerned about it? I said, well, like any homeowner, I'm investing in my property because I want my property nice and I wanna keep it upgraded and so forth. So, Representative stood up and told me, he says, well, we've already done an exploratory. Uh, we've attempted to reach out. We just can't generate any real interest in a corner. Problem being is, is logistically, it's an issue. It's really too small for any very large, uh, business to be built and so forth. So, rest assured, i- it's just gonna remain residential in the foreseeable future. And, okay, thank you very much. Um, eighteen months later, we have Dunkin' Donuts. So, I don't know what happened in between time, but there you go. So, that was kind of unexpected. Um, fast forward. So, these are some of the things that has happened and, uh, hopefully, hopefully those will kind of help. So, since the beginning of the construction, when they broke ground, understandably, you're gonna have a problem because there's gonna be disturbances in the ground. You're going to disturb what's in that ground. I have been paying for rodent, uh, removal about twenty to forty dollars a month in decon every month since last fall. Uh, finally started pulling the traps up in July and the voles have been out of sight. If you don't know what a vole is, it's like a miniature mole and, boy, they're destructive. Uh, I have tunnels that are in my backyard. I've had planters that are destroyed, plants that were destroyed. You can't believe how destructive these things can be. So, I, hopefully, I've got a good grasp on the situation. I put down five stations between three around my house, two in my yard, and it seems to have kind of controlled that. But, you know, of course, when they, they came, they came up with the, we're gonna knock down Cook County Hospital or the, uh, hospital, that was a big concern. Knock down woods, so far, things seem real good with that. So, hopefully, it's a good thing now. Uh, the other thing was the, uh, when they started the demolition, they started, the ground was soft. And then they halted demolition because I, I think they just wanted to get the foundation in and hurry up, get the building up and so forth, understandably. Well, now, late in fall, going into winter, ground starts to freeze over. They continue to work on the building and belate any, uh, any demolition on the property. Dead of winter, when the ground was totally frozen, they decided to tear up the rest of the old parkway that was in there, the driveways and so forth, which happened to be right directly next door to my neighbor on the north side. We have three houses there and the middle house, my neighbor on north side, orders Dunkin' Donuts. I gotta tell you, my house, it was like a freight train was going through it. You know, with the frozen ground, it was that bad. So, you know, checked the house out real good. I think they spent a week, lovely, you know, tearing all this up and getting it out of it. So, when they were done, I went over to the house, we were going, okay, I think we're okay, no, no real issues until spring. I literally have fifteen feet of foundation wall that's leaking. Uh, it's starting in the northwest corner, working its way east, which oddly enough, guess what they were tearing up, right? So, my neighbor to the north of me, I, I talked to her about it. I said, have you checked your house? She has a crawl space, she says, you know, I wouldn't even go down there and look. She says, but she was terrified. That's how bad the house shook. So, that might be one thing to take, keep in mind. If they're going to do demolition, you know, do it early on. While that ground is soft, things freeze, boy, you, you really don't wanna do it because it may advise it to the point where friends and neighbors I know a block away on Forest Avenue were feeling vibrationally. And it's pretty bad. Debris. I noticed a lot more debris in the creek. You're gonna get some from construction, no matter what you do, but it was, it was quite a bit of debris that wound up down in the creek. A number of trees down, mostly small ones. One very large tree, they came down. That's between my neighbor and the construction company. Uh, the insurance took care of it, but that tree came down on her house. Uh, so, it did some damage, did some damage to her back porch and so forth. And just so happened yesterday, we're running their, their front loads. So, you know, it's up to them however they handle it. But, you know, definitely keep in mind that you have all this around you and, you know, these cars are working, they're busy, they're trying to get their job done. So, you know, we had small trees in the creek, the, the debris was, I had. Locked in my driveway like you can't believe, a lot of gravel, which is not good for, like. Right. Yeah, gravel, they, they turn, drive it. So, it's kind of something, any of these stuff. Lot of dirt. Uh, my driveway cracked severely. Uh, again, this, this seemed to all happen right about in the wintertime on that frozen ground. So, I was seeing a lot of fracturing. Now, mind you, I've got an old driveway, so I see cracks from time to time anyway. This is pretty severe, okay? This, I had already taken care of this past, so. So, where are we now? Well, you know, I received a letter from the city prior to the construction, of course, within quarter time, it's building itself. Making suggestions, big concerns about traffic control out there because it's such a big, busy intersection. Uh, traffic has tapered back a bit, I think, because of the construction on a hundred fifty-ninth street. So, a lot of people are avoiding that. But, you know, in peak times, it's, it's crazy over there. So, that was one of my concerns and I was real concerned about the entrance exit that was on Cicero Avenue. Uh, warning of what I felt would happen would be people would come out. You, it's a small entrance exit, so now you have people trying to come out to turn south. Other people wanna go north and they're cutting across Cicero Avenue to turn north. Very dangerous. At the same time, you have others that are in the turn lane trying to turn in. So, it really creates a dangerous situation. There was a pretty severe accident. I think that was like, uh, that was at the beginning of summer perhaps, where there was a broadside, a truck had pulled out, a pickup truck guy was in a hurry, flew out of there, flew out of the parking lot and broadsided another guy. Um, kudos, by the way, to our police department, our fire department. They were marvelous. The street was fully covered all the way up to a hundred and sixtieth street and that, within an hour, they had it passable. So, you know, they, they were terrific. But fortunately, I think everybody came out of that all right. Both vehicles were totaled, absolutely totaled. So, these are things that are subject to happen now. Likewise, I'm right in the firing line as well as my other two neighbors on Cicero Avenue. So, heads on a swivel all the time with that. It was one of the big concerns. Uh, the other concern being the, the drive-through and having proper barriers there to block the traffic lights, the sounds, et cetera. And, uh, they suggested they were putting up forked fences, you know, you know. If you go down by the Sox outlet going north, you'll see the hairdresser sound at the end of that black. There's a huge barrier down there, rightfully so, because the lighting is right in the neighbor's yard and their building and so forth. As, you know, to me, usually they have a minimum of an eight to ten foot barrier there. Uh, we have disabled people, the cars are driving right in that direction, et cetera. So, it's, it's very disturbing. They decided to go with a weave fence, very attractive fence, but it just doesn't do the job. So, you know, suggestions were, were really not, uh, not listened to very well, I'm afraid. There were only three of us at the meeting, by the way, which was myself, a neighbor from north side of a hundred fifty-ninth street and Bob Kelly, he's another neighbor, he lives on a hundred and sixtieth and oh, so he's away from the building. At any rate, uh, I brought a bunch of pictures with, I'll pass these out, keep them. I, I'd like them to go to my Alderman. Uh, Mr. McCarthy, you, you know, for him to take these, you could look in, I'll be in contact with you about how we can resolve so many issues, I'll get into in a minute, uh, which to me is very simple. And just to give you an idea of what I see and I see every day. You see the traffic? I took these pictures during the. Lightest traffic. And it's kind of scary. But, again, I'll get to that in a minute and, uh, I will pass these out.
Joe, is there, is there, uh, I mean, you have a lot more left, I mean?
No, actually, I'll be through this pretty quickly. I listed everything else, I could just ramble right through it and be.
Okay, you're too, because realistically, we allow about three minutes and you've been, been beyond that. So, if you, you could finish up or that?
Yeah, let me, let me make a couple of points there and, you know. And I'll shoot right through it. Um, yes, please look at the picture. I put notations on the back of the pictures, which is, you know, we're trying to speed this up. You get an idea of what goes on. The one van that you'll see there, that was during some pretty heavy traffic. Uh, and it wound up that another vehicle was actually trying to come in while she was trying to get out and it was, it was very scary. The other thing is, is I counted them up one day that for every one car during peak hours, that would come out of the, the driveway there and turn south, there were four to five cars going over the double yellow line, turning north, blocking the turn lane, which is the westbound turn lane. So, it's going north and then going east also down a hundred fifty-ninth street. It's pretty darn scary. Multiple cars at one time, this happened two days ago. There were two cars at one time pulling out, both going north. That got scary. Semi, the delivery semi that's, that comes there to deliver to, to Dunkin' Donuts, blocks one lane. The, the poor driver has no help. He's trying to safely back in with a semi. You know, I haven't seen him for a little while, so hopefully dispatch changed that to a smaller vehicle. Uh, but he has to back in because he can't turn around. There's nothing else he can do. We have vehicles that park in the middle of Cicero Avenue with drivers that exit to get coffee and so forth. I understand, you know, they have nowhere else to go. I'm not angry with them, it's just hazardous situation. So, these are the current things, the lighting, lighting is really disruptive. I'll talk to, uh, Alderman McCarthy about that stuff. You know, easy to repair a lot of these things, install that. The V and R sign is the worst. I'll talk to you about that. Yeah, all right? And car horns going late at night, they want service, eleven thirty, twelve o'clock at night, so forth. Lot of language being thrown a magnet for it. Trashes outrageous, uh, we're forever cleaning up after that, after all company owners. Uh, the U turns in the street. My driveway is becoming a park place for cars to turn around. And that coupled with the gravel that I'm getting now from the new demolition up the block, which is the old pizza, uh, pizza place, uh, yeah, it's, that's. Really gets scary. And two, uh, the vision impairment, I have spent as long as, as long as about fifteen to twenty minutes just getting in and out of my driveway. So, it gets rough. Uh, the one thing that I wanna mention, then I'll, I'll cut, guys. The biggest concern I have is the creek. I took pictures of that, you'll see that at the end, there was a large tree that fell. The tree was so big that it went from the west side of the creek, clear across the creek, knocked down the fence from Dunkin' Donuts and hit the building.
knocked down the fence from Dunkin' Donuts and hit the bill. It blocked the creek. So, of course, Greater Met has come out and moved. I can't say there's other worse, I can't say all the...
Captain, I come.
And thank you, you know, for getting all the people. Crew came out, they're super violent, very good. They came out, I said, "Well, Brian, how are you gonna get through it?" He says, "I don't know." The pictures you see are pictures taken from the King parking lot, because it's all private property. There is no access, there is no easement. So, my question is this, what's gonna happen when we have an ice jam, which has happened numerous times in the winter? Fire, public works will come out, they give permission, Greater Met, boom, 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 break it up, and away it goes. But there's virtually no way for these people to get in, they gotta cross private property lines to do it. So, I'm watching them literally. They were out there with their front loader dancing on two wheels to get that tree out of there. So, it was pretty scary, you know? So, that's about it. I mean, I have more, but, you know, I'll come up with...
Joe, can I ask you, at some point, can you make a copy of your concerns and give it to the alderman or to our city administrator so we have that on file? That would be great.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much for your time. And again, I'm not here to try to detract from new construction, new business. The lifeblood of any city is support from the local businesses. We want that. I'm just saying that we have to be a little more careful as to, and more selective as to how we do it, where we do it, and, you know, listen to the people when we're talking about, listen, we got control of this and that, because they'll solve all this. I mean, they'll provide a lot of it. A lot of things are very easy. We'll break a lot of things.
I'll swing by, I'll stop by.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to address the council? Okay, we'll move on. I need a motion to establish the consent agenda. Alderman Emmett made the motion, I need a second. Alderman Stewie made the second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Keeler?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Coontz?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Consent agenda. Consideration of the following list of bills dated, regular bills and supplemental bills fiscal year 2025, '26. Consideration of the following minutes, City Council Meeting, September 9th, 2025, and Veterans Commission Meeting, August 21st, 2025. I need a motion to accept the... Alderman Stewie made the motion. Second, Alderman McCarthy. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Keeler? Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Coontz?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Administration, a general discussion and request for policy direction from the City Council related to city hosting potential Independence Day celebration in 2026. So, this is a discussion item only, we basically want to talk about where we're at. We've done the celebration two years now, and we want to get a feel from the City Council whether we should continue that or not.
All right, so I'm looking for policy direction this evening about next year, about if the council is open to hosting an Independence Day celebration and obviously fireworks in 2026. There was a provision in our fireworks contract that we can exercise their services for 2026, you know, based on, I think it's 12 weeks from the event that took place, I believe it was at the end of June. This year, the Veterans Commission helped coordinate that. I received word from them that they'd be interested in hosting that event again. I think they met about it at their last meeting and discussed that and voted on it to do that in 2026. Ultimately, it's in the purview of the City Council on if you'd like to move forward. I'm bringing this forward to you, because I know there's been a history with the event and how the city used to host the event, how the event went to, I think it was a not-for-profit organization. The city was not in the events business any longer, so it went to the corporation or the not-for-profit that did host the event and coordinated that. Like I said, the Veterans Commission did host it this year, but obviously, because they hosted it, it is a city event. It is city resources, it's city liability, it's city insurance, and so on and so forth. Cost of the fireworks this year, from what I remember, was about $35,000. Police overtime, I tried to look for that number today, I know a chief told me about it, I think it was around 5,000, not including any other costs that took place with regards to hosting that fireworks celebration. So, I wanted to throw out there, just for open discussion, yes, it is America 250 next year, 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, so it's a big year next year. But it's important that we discuss this, especially in today's climate on hosting public events, and, you know, how serious an entity needs to be in planning and executing, especially when it comes to security. So, I just wanted to put this out there, because if we do want to move forward, we need to begin planning right now.
Alderman McCarthy?
I attended it last year at Gaelic Park, and the way they had it laid out, I loved it. I mean, it was perfect, the way it was set up, and, I mean, they did charge $10, but, I mean, if you bring more people in your car, if you're worried about that, it can turn to nothing, you know? I mean, it was a great time, and just the way it was set up, security was there, fireworks were great, and, I mean, I've seen a lot of positive notes on social media about what a great time everyone had, so.
Alderman Emmett?
I'm gonna agree with Joe on that. We were a city that had probably the biggest Oak Fest around for years with top bands. I think everybody on this council probably worked it. That kind of faded out. We're at a better location, we're not impacting the neighborhood. $5,000 for police, I think when they worked Oak Fest, we ate that back then, even though that we needed the police there. If we can't find $40,000 on the buzzer to have something in the community that, this town was packed for seven days, that just wasn't a good location. I think Gaelic is being a good neighbor, giving us their secured location, and like everything, I hope we don't shut down, because the way society is, we can't live in fear. We have a good police department, I'm sure they'll have some drones up, we have some drones like every other town, New Lennox, Tinley, and everybody else is having it, and I don't want to sit there, sit back here and say, "We're not gonna have anything." Joe was right. I was attended by some of my family members, I was babysitting grandkids somewhere else, but they said it was a nice, nice security area. The carnival kind of brings in little trouble, I don't think we need that. I think we've read that in newspapers and seen it on social media. I think just the event, our volunteers, the gentlemen are all older, they do a one heck of a job, let me tell you. And I think it's good for the community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Keeler?
I have to agree with that too, because I was there this year too, and it was a great event, and my nieces were there and they had a great time, and brought a lot of families out, a lot of people I didn't see, haven't seen in a long time, they were out there and celebrating the fireworks. It was a great thing.
Anyone else?
I just want to note, when I say 5,000 for police, you know, next year, I expect that to probably be more for security reasons. So, you know, there's things that we learned this year, because we did do a debrief after the event. So, you know, right now, I'm not gonna hold myself to what the number is, you know, as we go ahead and start planning this, if this is the direction of the council, you know, I'll keep you apprised, but I just want to just let you know, just don't hold me to that number.
Alderman Coontz?
So, the question I have then is, the money that they collect from people coming in, does that strictly go to Gaelic Park? All of it? Or can that number be a dollar or two higher to help defer the cost for the police or something? I don't know where all the money went. I've seen it perfectly from my front yard, so...
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I don't believe the city collected money here, I think that was more Gaelic collecting the money for that.
At all?
Yeah, they hosted the event.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alderman Wolf?
Yeah, it was, there was a very, very short timeline to get it all together last year, and it all worked out, but, because those questions came up even then as far as for cutting down on our own costs, if there would be a shared cost with Gaelic. We brought that up, but it was such short. I think there was also, fireworks, of course, are gonna go, I imagine, unless it's in the contract, but, we got it at 35 because we did it, what was it, like, the week before or the week after? A week before the Fourth of July?
Yes.
Yeah. So, if you get it any closer to the Fourth of July, or on the Fourth of July, it's definitely cost more. So, gotta figure out a budget of what you want to do, but I do agree, it was, there's been quite a few events at Gaelic Park that have been great for the community, and this was one of them. I do agree with the comments as far as, that's unfortunate too, but, you know, the carnival rides and everything else, that tends to bring in problems, and we noticed that prior to Oak Fest, the last few years of Oak Fest where we cut down on carnival games and all that stuff, to stop the riffraff from coming in, and so, things to consider.
Any other thoughts? Alderman McCarthy?
Actually, I mean, the way it turned out when we had it earlier, if that, I mean, because two years ago, I believe, it cost us like 40,000, and then last year it was 35. So, it dropped because we did it a little earlier. I mean, so if you do it that way, that offsets the overtime or close, and helps out pay for the police overtime. I mean, because it worked out fine, we didn't have any competition with any other towns, and then it would help the business more, because no one has fireworks two weeks prior, and it worked out nice.
Alderman Emmett?
I think what Chuck is saying is right, I do recall a meeting with the chief or a conversation that if it was wound to Fourth of July, he would have a hard time manning it. So, maybe we are bringing, you know, a week or two before, we're not putting the burden on the police department with all the volume of calls they have, which we all know how it was on here, around here on July 4th. So, a week before, we're just, you know, maybe not get the volume that other communities get on that weekend, and the police department can handle it.
Yeah, we were a little bit short time for the police department, if I remember correctly. They were waiting for the plan that was going to be for security for Gaelic in that case, and it took a while to get that resolved. So, if we're gonna do it, like Moses has said, we really gotta start planning now and put together everything we can to plan it, to make sure we're ready for it. So, if I'm hearing everything correctly from the council, I think Moses, your direction is, yes, they're looking to continue on and plan, plan as we go right now.
All righty. I will work with staff to start planning the event, you know, if anything major comes up in the plan that is gonna require your involvement, obviously, I'll bring it to the council. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Next. Approval of proposal from Terricon Consultants, Inc. for water sampling and sewer inspection services related to the property located at 14723 Central Avenue, and their participation in the Illinois Site Remediation Program in an amount of $13,950 memo from our city administrator. I need a motion. Alderman Emmett made the motion. Alderman Wolf made the second. Okay, Moses, when you're...
All righty. So, as the memo indicates, the city would like to do some precautionary testing in the area of 14723 Central Avenue. That property, since at least 2006, has been working with the Illinois EPA regarding cleaning the site of dry cleaner solvent that was previously used at the property. The process started in '06, I think in the last few years is when they really did a lot of the remediation work, and they're looking to conclude that shortly. We retained an environmental consultant in late spring in light of a water main break that took place in the area. When we were responding, we found the cleaning agent in the grounded, in a sanitary sewer nearby. Pursuant to direction of our environmental consultant, they had recommended that we do additional testing to make sure that that cleaning agent material is not affecting our infrastructure, which is sanitary sewer and water. So, under this proposal, we are going to test the water at four residential properties located east of the site. In addition, we're gonna do testing of our sanitary sewer that is in an easement on the property. And then depending on the test of results of this activity, you know, our environmental consultant can advise us accordingly. I did speak to all of the residential property owners about this and gave them the whole history of that. I made it clear to them that when the water main break happened, we did call the Illinois EPA, we did call the MWRD, they did appear on site and did not express any directives or concern when we showed them what happened. Therefore, it gave us time to find out what we don't know, and what we need to find out, and what we need to do, and what's proper. And pursuant to the recommendations of environmental consultant, we're gonna start with the testing and then go from there. If there's any question, I'd be happy to answer it, but go ahead.
Alderman Emmett?
Moses, thank you for keeping me advised on my residence. I just want to make sure, it says we're gonna be reimbursed by the responsible party. If they go belly up, I don't want to make sure we fall on deaf ears, that we put a lien on that property to recoup, because a lot of businesses have problems, and then they go bankruptcy and move on. I want to make sure we get our money that we have into it like we do when we mow places. I might not be on this board in two, three, four years from now, but a lot of things fell on deaf ears, it seems. I want to make sure we know, if we all move on, if something happens, the city is gonna collect any money, which your memo says, but all of a sudden, they go bankruptcy and LLC's gone, and we're stuck with the bill.
So, two things. Number one, I'm tracking all expenses, number one. Number two, there are certain actions that occur from properties, so whether it be a tax sale, tax sales extinguish all liens, so you may not know that. So, we'll do what we can to protect the taxpayers of the city, to make sure that if we're gonna be fronting monies, and we do that routinely for demolition actions, for lien actions, but there are certain types of events per state law that we cannot recoup the monies, okay? I ran into this a lot in my previous community, where we had multiple property maintenance liens, taking care of rental residential properties. If, from what I understand, if the property goes into foreclosure and the bank takes it, it's fair game. But if the property owner loses the property by not paying taxes and it goes to the sheriff's sale, that extinguishes it. Okay? So, I'm not alleging anything about this property, I'm just telling you in general on how sometimes we're not, you know, able to collect liens in all instances.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
All right, Alderman Keeler? Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Kuntz.
Yes.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, next. Approval of special events permit application. Clover's Bar and Grill for Saturday, September 27, 2025. I need a motion. Alderman Emmett made a motion and second Alderman Wolfe. Moses, when you get a chance.
This is a, another routine, major special event permit that requires council action. Again, like the others, you know, the staff vets this to make sure everything is okay before bringing it to council. And I really don't have any other comments about the event in general unless you do.
Any questions? Alderman Wolfe? Just a question as far as the timing on all of this because I'm sure it takes time for preparation and we're binding the business four days or whatever, right? From, from what we're looking at today, I don't have any concerns about it, about the application and...
So what we're, we're going to be communicating to the businesses because there is a timeframe in which to apply for special events, whether they're major or minor. The, the trigger usually is if it's an event where there's a large amount of people or if a multiple licenses are required, that's what triggers city council action. So we've advised them of this, that we need to take this to the council. I mean, I think we received this last week. So, yeah, we, we need to do a good job communicating with everyone just about this. Okay?
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Yes.
Wolfe.
Yes.
Kuntz.
Yes.
Emmett.
Yes.
Stewie.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into public works. Approval of proposal from H.R. Green in the budgeted amount of $139,256 related to the 2026 Water Main Improvement Program for Engineering Design and Bidding Services. Memo from our Director of Public Works. Need a motion? Alderman Stewie made the motion. Alderman Emmett made the second. Mike?
I'm sorry, Mike, if you wouldn't mind, if you can go to the other podium, we've been, we've been asked to go to the other podium.
Good evening. So, yes, we, we are looking for the approval of design and engineering services for bidding engine, bidding services for the 2026 Water Main Improvement Program. Just to give a little background on this, obviously our water system is aging and we are having more breaks, more significant breaks and certainly more numerous breaks throughout our system. So our goal here is, is we are budgeting certain amount of money annually. Our goal is, first year is to engineer the project and then the second year, once we've built up a little bit more funding, is to construct the project and then just continue that, that whole cycle repeated and throughout the city, concentrating on the areas that are of biggest concern where we're having the most 26 in that nature. The three areas that are included in this program or the 2026 program, Sunset Court is also right next to the area where the, with the dry cleaners. So there's some issues related to the dry cleaner. But that, that little subdivision, the issue is, is the water mains are in the back yards. There's a lot of sheds.
Things that were constructed over the water main that would make it very difficult for our crews to go and repair a water main break, especially if we had to go out there at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. So the goal on that area is to move the water to Sunset Court itself. Obviously, we would have to revert the services from the rear to the front.
That's one location. Second location is Victoria Drive and Central Avenue, that intersection. We have a water main that we've had some significant breaks at that location. There's a couple of large diameter storm stores in that area that make it difficult to perform any work in this area. We would also look to add an additional valve because without that new valve, in order to isolate this area, we would actually have to shut off a bigger area, which actually would include City Hall as well too. So we're looking to get that project included in the program. And then the third location is, basically it's Laramie Avenue from 153rd to 157th Street and then 155th Street from Lockwood Avenue to Leclerc. We've had some significant breaks in those areas over the last couple of years. So we would like to concentrate on replacing the water main in that area. So we did put together an RFP for the engineering services. That was advertised on August 1st. And then on September 3rd, we opened, we received three proposals and we opened those proposals. In the memo, it lists the summary of Hancock Engineering. Initially, the proposal that we got from Hancock Engineering appeared to be the, the lower amount. It's $107,690. But when we were reviewing their documentation and their proposal, there were some inconsistencies with, with their numbers. One of the things, when you added up the, the column for total instead of 107,000, it actually came out to 114,960 dollars. When you looked into it further, some of the hours didn't quite add up in the rows. In the one row for topographic survey, there was the amount that they had included in there for the survey crew was $30, but when you go to the next line, it was $130. So when you go back to that first line again and put in the $130, there's an additional $5,600 that would theoretically be included. So now we're at $120,560. So, you know, our concern is, is this was, the RFP was out for 30 days. So our concern is obviously just being correct in that information. We have a $2 million water main project that we're looking to get this engineering firm to work on. So we had conversations at Public Works, at our Assistant Director and our Street Superintendent. And we felt that it was, the best option was to go to the second engineering firm, which is H.R. Green. Now, H.R. Greens is a little bit more money, but they also included a technical soil survey in their proposal, which especially in the area of the dry cleaners, that is a very good option because we don't know if there is any kind of contaminated soil in that area still. If there is, then we have to do separate remediation, removal, disposal of that. And all of that information needs to be included in the bid documents and the specifications. So, so there's, there's some touchy situations, like I said, in that area. So, like I said, we did look at the various proposals. It is our recommendation that we go with H.R. Green in the amount of $139,256.
Any questions? Alderman Emmett?
Mike, you answered my questions on their regularities. Thank you. I appreciate that. Have we checked with legal and maybe Moses can answer that? That subdivision was put in, how water mains became in someone's backyard is, I wasn't here back then. I was patrolling the streets when it was being built and believed it was happening. Can we recoup or go after the builder? Probably going to say no, but I'm trying to do anything I can for our citizens. So now we're paying for something. It seems like every time I'm on the city council, something happened 20 years ago and we're paying for it now, which current council members sitting here, we're getting tired of hearing that.
It's my understanding that that Sunset Court was originally designed, I believe it was going to be kind of a apartment or condominium type development. So it potentially made sense to put the, the water main on the outside in easements. But then at some point it was changed to a standard residential property and yes, now you ended up with water main in the backyard.
Well, I see Moses shaking his head. That's why I said that, that's a no. I could catch him. Thank you, Moses.
I just, I, I understand your comment and this is, you know, I'll, I'll tell a little story here on why I'm not happy with farmers sometimes. You know, they, they laid clay drain tile 100 years ago and today we're chasing the problem. So I understand what you're saying, but you know, I'm assuming that, you know, we accepted that subdivision at some point in the past and, you know, as Mike indicated, he's been out to that area many times to, to repair mains and it, it's due for replacement.
Alderman McCarthy?
Was the breakdown for this Hancock wrong on their numbers too? Because like on the meetings and coordination, it came up with 134 hours. And if you divide the 25,080 by that, it comes up with like $187 an hour. And according to their chart, the highest was $165 an hour.
There was multiple inconsistencies and that was our concern that, you know, if there was one thing, maybe we, you know, if it's just a single math error, but there was...
Oh, the whole roll I looked at earlier, I was like, they're definitely doing something wrong. Somewhere higher and then somewhere at like $70 an hour. So, I mean, but somewhere at 165 or more than what they post. So, I mean, if we could get their exact numbers corrected, that'd be a good idea.
I mean, like I said, our concern is, is got them or whoever the firm that we choose is going to be working on a $2 million project. Unfortunately, we might have somebody that didn't go that extra to just verify and correct, you know, review their proposal, especially since that, that RFP was out for a whole month.
Oh yeah, it's pretty obvious. I could figure it out.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Keeler. Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe.
Yes.
Alderman Kuntz.
Yes.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we'll move into IT. Approval of purchase of 13 Cradle Point R980 AVL routers for frontline fire department vehicles through Verizon Wireless Government Pricing Program in the amount of $14,300 with approved 911 funds. Motion? Alderman McCarthy made the motion. Second by Alderman Keeler. Aaron, you want to go ahead?
So the current setup is an R1900, still an industry standard device. Verizon came to us a couple of months ago with this opportunity. It ends in a few weeks. We're getting the devices at a very, very, very good promo price. So we are upgrading early or hoping to upgrade early so that we don't have to pay full price next year or the year after. Full price is upwards of 5,000. So we're getting these at 1,100 a piece. Five-year support as well for the device. This is an unheard of price. So we pretty much moved as fast as he could to get this done.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Yes.
Wolfe.
Yes.
Kuntz.
Yes.
Emmett.
Yes.
Stewie.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, next. Old business. Anyone have any old business? Alderman Emmett?
Mike, come on up to the mic. I'm going through some things from our September 9th meeting. We paid $1,800 H&R Green for bridge inspections. And I'm thinking to myself, we have a lot of streams that go underneath. I don't think we have any bridges in town. Could you help me out on that one?
There are three, I guess classified by IDOT as official bridges. I'm just drawing a blank on the, the location. I believe it was Laverne and basically the, it was at Natalie Creek.
Okay.
We are required by IDOT to perform biannual inspections of those bridges. We did get a couple quotes and H.R. Green provided the, the lower quote on that. Like I said, that's an annual requirement from IDOT. They performed the inspections, completed the reports and then submitted that.
Are they ours? Are they the water districts? They are ours?
Yes.
So like going over Long Avenue or something that...
Yeah, there are specific requirements if it's, if it's a multi-covert location, depending on the diameter, depending on the length of the publics themselves, or if it's an actual bridge. I mean, I know Laverne and I'm just drawing a blank.
Yeah, I know.
There are actual bridges.
Yeah, by the little creek there. So that would be a bridge, that little thing. Okay, thank you. And then two, when we approved the summer landscape, the door entry signs and everything. I know the one on 159th and originally hasn't been done because of all that construction. But in June or July, I wrote this down, but it, I forgot about it. Why are we adding mulch if summer landscaping, they're doing our entry signs or they just mown it? I want to make sure. Who's planting the flowers, our entry signs, and who's adding the mulch?
They should be doing, to my knowledge, they should be doing the plantings and maintaining those, those signs and planting beds.
Okay. I seen it, you know, and this was back in April and I'm saying, did we just say cut the grass? Are they going to do everything, you know, the flowers, the new mulch in the beginning of the year?
Yeah, in the past, I believe Dutch Valley was doing some of that work and then we went out the bids or earlier this spring.
Yeah.
Ultimately, summer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other old business that anybody has? Okay, next. New business. Anybody have any new business that they need to address? Okay. We're going to kind of throw a, a change to you guys again. What we're going to do is ask for a motion to close the, the open meeting with adjournment, but we are asking the city council to go in the back for executive session to have a, a reference discussion about two items. One of the items is our collective negotiating matters between public body and its employees. And then the other item will be litigation when an action against affecting on behalf of the particular public body has been filed, is pending. We were just basically doing some informational stuff. So once we come out of that, we will have already signed off and adjourned to our open meeting and we won't have to come back and read, read set it. So just so you know.
So just to clarify, there will be no action taken after executive session this evening? So the meeting will be adjourned and then enter another executive session.
Okay, so before executive session, I need a motion to close open session. Alderman Emmett made the motion. Second, Alderman Stewie. Roll call.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe.
Yes.
Alderman Kuntz.
Yes.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, open meeting is now closed. We'll head business will be done after we leave that session.